Good evening. I'd like to call this town council meeting to order. It's Monday, April 25th, 2022, at 7:00 PM here in McKinnon Council Chambers. First order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number two, roll call. Mary?
Counselor Adams.
Present.
Counselor Katrona. Counselor Daniel.
Present.
Counselor Dow. Counselor Jovan.
Present.
Counselor Lazo.
Present.
Counselor Marquetti.
Present.
Counselor Ryan.
Present.
And Counselor Steves.
Present.
Agenda item number three, consider and accept the town council meeting minutes of Monday, April 11th, 2022.
Second.
Any corrections, additions, deletions? Counselor Steves.
Yeah, under item number 12, it just says, motion by Counselor somebody and second by Counselor Adams. I don't remember who the first was. It might have been me, but I don't remember.
So that was me.
Was it you?
That was me.
Anything else? Nothing further? All those in favor? Opposed?
I recuse.
I am.
And one recusal.
Recuse or abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain.
Abstaining. Very good. Agenda item number four, subcommittee reports. General Government, Counselor Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a couple items on the agenda tonight. We'll talk about them when we get to them.
Close that. Very good. Department of Public Works, Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a DPW subcommittee meeting on April 19th. Agenda item number 13 tonight is to vote to approve change order of the wastewater treatment plant. We also discussed the condition of the road and sidewalk at Benefit and Len Street. We discussed the road improvement program and Main Street walkthrough, felled trees on Morris Street, and possible removal of trees at Oak Ridge Cemetery. Next meeting is Wednesday, April 27th, 2022, at 6:00 PM in the Veterans Room, where we will be discussing and voting on the DPW budget, snow and ice budget, water enterprise, and sewer enterprise budgets. Thank you.
Very good. Education and Human Services, Counselor Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had two meetings last week, on April 20th and April 21st. On April 20th, we met with the school receiver and the business office of the Southbridge Public Schools, in which we reviewed the Southbridge Public Schools budget. Discussion was held regarding the same. It was voted out favorably to present to council as presented by the town manager and the receiver. On April 21st, we met with the business manager of the Bay Path School Committee to review the Bay Path budget. That was voted favorably to send to full council for approval. We also reviewed the other various budgets within the EH Subcommittee involving the Veterans Council, Recreation Committee, Community Center, and Inspections Department. Those were voted favorably as well to be presented to the full council for budget. I did receive an email earlier today from the town manager's office requesting me, I set up a meeting. She proposed some dates. I'll be setting that up in the near future. Thank you.
Very good. Planning and Development, Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you, we had a meeting on April 14th. Agenda items number nine and 10 are on this evening's agenda. Our next meeting is this Thursday, April 28th, to go over the budget and I believe one other item. Thank you.
Very good. Protection of Persons and Property, Counselor Lazo.
Mr. Chairman, we had a meeting. I did not attend. It was work-related. I thank Counselor Jovan for covering as chairman of PPP. I don't know if there is a report.
If Counselor Lazo would like me to report, we did review the various department budgets at PPP. Those budgets were reported out favorably to present to council for approval during the budget process. There's the Police Department, Fire Department, and the Inspections Department as well.
Very good. Thank you. Item number five, Chairman's announcements. I have nothing this evening. Item number six, Town Manager's announcements.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I only have a couple of quick items, just to give you an update. As you know, we had some cable access surplus equipment that we had on auction. My staff wanted me to let you know that of the 22 items that we've had, we had to extend our auction because we didn't have any interest initially in February. But over the last month of the 22 items posted, 18 have sold, four remaining, and we've netted just under $1,000 on those items. And I was told that they went for a reasonable amount of money relative to what we were asking. Mr. Pelletier is here this evening, and later on, we can discuss the changing COVID numbers. He also wanted me to remind everybody that as part of Earth Day, the Health Department is sponsoring Beautify Southbridge, which will take place on May 14th. If anybody has any questions, please contact the Health Department. I also wanted to let people know, we received word through our contractor at the water treatment facility that we received a 2022 Massachusetts Drinking Water System Award. This award is for medium and large communities, and this is now the... We've been recognized six times over the last decade, four times in the last four years for having high-quality water. Lastly, I would just like to mention that since we last met, I've received two resignations. The first is Mary Darling, who's sitting right here. As many of you know, I shared that announcement that came in almost two weeks ago. Mary's had some changes which will affect her ability to work here. I want to thank her for her services I did and the time that she's put in for the town of Southbridge, and I wish her well in her endeavors. Also, I wanted to let you know that late this afternoon, I did receive a formal resignation from our DPW director, Ms. Blakely, who's seated behind me for some of the other agenda items. And I really want to thank Heather for her dedication and service to the town for the last 10 years. I've enjoyed working with her over these last 18 months. I've seen a lot of progress while I've been here on a lot of our infrastructure projects, and that goes to her credit. She'll be sorely missed, and I wish her well in her future endeavors. And she's already talked with Ms. Rubena, RHR Director, Assistant Town Manager, who was also here. And we will be immediately posting the position. Ms. Blakely has indicated that her willingness to help us through the transition. And again, she'll be sorely missed, and that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Agenda item number seven, Proclamation for Children's Mental Health Week. Resolved by the Council of the Town of Southbridge, whereas good mental health is a key component in a child's healthy development, and Children's Mental Health Week provides the opportunity to focus on this important matter while celebrating the accomplishments of children and families affected by mental health concerns. And whereas, according to the United States Department of Health and Human Services, one in five children is diagnosed with a mental health condition. And whereas, research has shown early identification and appropriate treatment of mental health disorders among children and adolescents provide them better opportunities to lead full and productive lives. And whereas, children and youth with mental health problems and their families benefit from access to timely services and supports that are family-driven, youth-guided, and culturally appropriate. They also benefit from the integration of behavioral health in primary care, education, and child welfare. And whereas, it is important that children and adolescents, along with their families and communities, learn about warning signs of mental health disorder and where to obtain necessary assistance and treatment. And whereas, the involvement and partnership of family members in the care and treatment of children and youth is essential to positive outcomes. And whereas, Children's Mental Health Week was developed by families of children with emotional, behavioral, and mental health needs to focus on the needs of their children and families. In celebrating this year's theme, Action Changes Things, it is fitting to increase public awareness among all Massachusetts citizens of this important issue. And whereas, obtaining a full and accurate diagnosis of a child requires gathering information from diverse sources, including the family, school, and others involved with this child. And now therefore, I, John L. Daniel, Chairperson of the Town of Southbridge, do hereby proclaim May 1st through 7th, 2022, as Children's Mental Health Awareness Week, in witness therefore, this 25th day of April, 2022. Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to thank Ms. Oliveras for bringing this to our attention. She's a family support specialist at the Parent Professional Advocacy League. And I just wanted to thank her for coming out, or she can't make it this evening, but she came out at the last meeting. And I thank her for all the work that she does on the behalf of children and mental wellness awareness for the first week of May, but the month of May is Mental Health Awareness Month itself, so, thank you.
Very fitting and suitable. Very good. Agenda item number eight, Citizens' Form. Are there any citizens that would like to address the council tonight on an issue not on tonight's agenda? Please.
Donald Solinsky, Henry Street. I generally apologize to you if I make a derogatory comment, as I did last meeting. But it continues to amaze me how some of you make up accusations when all anyone has to do is simply view the town council meetings to showcase your continued deceptions. Case in point, last meeting, Counselor Lazo stated after my five-minute talk that he never called me a psycho. I ask you to look at the January 24th, 2022, Town Council Meeting, where that is exactly what Counselor Lazo called me. Knowing Counselor Lazo as I do, I certainly don't expect him to be a man that would apologize for his statements. But I would hope he would continue, he wouldn't continue to lie about them. Another case in point, Counselor Lazo continues to say that, I quote, "I keep saying that we killed his dog, and so he called me a liar for that." And again, I have to repeat myself as I did at the January 10th, 2022, Town Council Meeting. I wore a shirt that said, "Southbridge Killed My Dog," and I explained what that shirt symbolized. That the town voted to kill my dog and would have killed my dog at the recommendation of the ACO, had I not had an attorney that got the dog out the back door in spite of you and in spite of the ACO. So let's be clear once again. I do not keep saying the town killed my dog. I keep saying the town voted to kill my dog. That is not hot air, as Counselor Lazo said at the December 10th, 2021 meeting. It's not a lie. It's a fact. And speaking of lies, Counselor Jovan states that the town council never voted to kill my dog. And the town manager affirmed that at the January 24th, 2022 meeting. I repeat, the majority of you voted to kill my dog at that meeting, where I was not even allowed to speak. I once again urge the residents to view that meeting on YouTube. It is frightening how you lie when it is on tape. One only has to wonder what you lie about that isn't on tape. So you wonder why I continue to come here and speak? I'll let the citizens of Southbridge answer that.
Are there any other citizens that would like to approach the podium to speak to an issue not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we'll move on. Agenda item number nine, vote to approve an extension to the CDBG fiscal year 20 grant from June 30, 2022 to June 30, 2023, to the Department of Housing and Community Development Agreement with the town to complete the West Street construction, anticipating there will be two six-month extensions needed, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That was voted on on April 14th, 3-0, in favor to bring up to the town council. You've noticed that this is something that continues to happen. It's just because of certain delays with things that are happening. It's a requirement to send to, I believe it's DHCD, the request from the town to extend it out in a timely manner, and that way, we have that extension to finish off certain projects that we're doing within town utilizing CDBG funds. Now, what is different about this request, though, tonight is the fact that Ms. Dean requested that we extend this out for a period of a year. So it'd be two extensions. They can only extend out for six months, in six months. Her concern was any type of delays. She can just move forward with the second extension if there is any delays, obviously because of the supply chain issues that we're having right now and some of the workforce shortages that we're having. So I don't think the PND had any problem with her going to the town council saying, hey, can we ask for this extension and possibly a second extension? The only thing I would ask for at this point in time is that Ms. Dean come back at that period of time if she had to ask for a second, or if she had to put in for a second extension, that she just let the town council know. But I don't have a problem with the town council voting in favor to take this out to one full year.
Any questions? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. So the memorandum says, extend the grant to December 31st, 2022. But the agenda says 2023, so the explanation is you wanted to add an extra year to it?
So this would take us all, so she could only do six months at a time, but with an end date of 2023. If she had to do it, a second extension, then that would take us out to December, is it December? June of 2023.
Okay.
The only thing I would ask that Ms. Dean do is if there was, she had to move forward with that extra extension that either through the town manager herself or via email that I have to request for the second extension because of shortage.
But I was just pointing out that Ms. Dean is not asking for 2023, but that's what the agenda says. The memorandum just says 2022.
It does, but she's also asking for a second extension within that period of time.
The other question I had was in...
Yeah, okay. Go, please. Up to Chair.
Counselor Marquetti, could you please repeat your question?
I just was saying that the memorandum says that you want to extend the contract to December 31st, 2022, but the agenda item says you want to extend it to June of 2023.
So I wonder if this is the same thing we discussed at the subcommittee meeting?
Maybe.
Where you said that the memos were out of order.
Okay.
So I know it's confusing. We're working with multiple grants. The fiscal year 20 grant is the one that we're asking to extend for an entire, no, excuse me. So we're discussing 20, from fiscal year 20 to extend to June of 2023. The following agenda item will be fiscal year 19, which we're asking to extend to December of 2022.
Correct. But the agenda item says 2023.
The agenda items, as I read them, look correct.
Okay. All right. I'm just pointing out that the memorandum says 2022. I have no problem extending it to 2023. I'm just pointing it out. That's all.
Well, it's a typo. Forgive me.
The other question I had was, with the Department of Public Works, it says here, "The Department of Public Works is working to maximize capacity to complete local infrastructure projects." And then the next paragraph says, "Our Economic Development and Planning Department is working closely with the DPW and the contracted engineers tie in bond to enter into a construction contract by May, with the bid published in March 16th and the bid opening scheduled for April 20th." I take it that that second paragraph is related to the first paragraph, the West Street project. Is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. That's all I have. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else?
Point of information, bid opening is tomorrow, April 26th.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Agenda item number 10, vote to approve an extension to the CDBG fiscal year 19 grant from June 30, 2022 to December 31st, 2022, to the Department of Housing and Community Development Agreement with the town to complete the 5C commercial rehab for signs, awnings, facades, and allow the town manager to sign all related paperwork.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Adams.
Thank you. It was 3-0 again at the PND meeting on April 14th, in favor to bring it, endorsing it to the town council. Again, we find ourselves in the same situation. I believe it's one of the major facades that needs to be, facades are on, that still needs to be completed, a simple extension to DHCD. And then from there, hopefully, most of the money will be spent and then possibly go into other smaller projects to make sure we zero out that account that we received from the state.
Very good. Counselor Steves.
Yeah, just a quick clarification is who's actually getting this project?
The larger awning project is going to 111 Central. They've done a lot of upgrades to that building. That was rated poor to fair on our slumblight survey of the downtown, which is part of the criteria we use to choose the projects. And we'll be doing a rigid awning on each side of the building and a small awning on the side of the building. Once we know the exact cost of that, then we can use the last of the funds to probably do some small, soft awning projects at 300 Main, Central Pizza, and potentially Fish and Tails.
Anyone else? Very well. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Thank you. Agenda item number 11, vote to ratify Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, MIIA, health and dental insurance renewal for the Blue Cross/Blue Shield Plans effective July 1, 2022, and allow the town manager to sign all related documents.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Ryan.
No, didn't that go through EHS? No? Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. You're right. Thank you. This was recommended unanimously by the General Government Subcommittee? Sorry. I thought it was in EHS.
Close that.
Yeah, that's it, Mr. Chairman.
Very good. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As Counselor Ryan noted, we went before the General Government Subcommittee. Every year, we get a proposal from our insurance provider. This year, using our consultant, we stuck with MYA and we were given a range of rates that we may anticipate receiving, anywhere from 1% to 8%. The increase rate that came back was 4.1%, which was a favorable rate. And given our experiences with MYA, we would ask respectfully that the council approve the renewal for these rates for the coming fiscal year.
Very good. Any questions? Counselor Jovan.
Through you, I think Counsel Ryan's confusion is that this was discussed at EHS, but it was on the fact that we approved, we were talking about the school budgets and about the 70-30 split and all that, and about the rates, and we asked, I think, through, Ms. Harnoyz on the Finance Department had responded about why we went with MYA, as Bay Path had stated that their provider gave them favorable rates at a reduced rate. However, Ms. Harnoyz had indicated to us that they did seek to go to that provider, but we did not. We were not eligible because of our loss ratio. So I think that, just to clarify the confusion of why that may have occurred this evening.
Yeah, he is absolutely right. That is exactly what I first thought of, and then I looked at the agenda item beneath it. I was like, nope, this is the other one. Yeah, thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Agenda item number 12, vote to approve Massachusetts Interlocal Insurance Association, MIIA, proposed health insurance 70-30 split effective July 1, 2022.
So moved.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes, this one also went through GenGov. This was approved unanimously, and if I remember correctly, this is what we've been discussing for a very long time about making our health insurance rates or what we offer as a split more competitive with the towns around us, but the manager will have more information.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, Counselor Ryan is correct. We have been talking about this. We wanted to try and do this last year. Ms. Wadzki wound up leaving at the time we were looking into this. However, the great resignation that many of us are familiar with has really brought to light the challenges that many communities have recruiting and retaining quality employees. And we've been very fortunate to retain the people we have and to recruit the people we have brought on recently. We have a really great staff. You've saw some of the new faces, and you saw the slide in my budget presentation. But what we will tell you in those circumstances where we were not able to keep people or not recruit people, the number one issue that comes back through the department heads is that we are not as competitive as other communities around us. Ms. Rubena, our HR Director, Assistant Town Manager, she did research for me. She has been able, and other staff have confirmed this by speaking to other communities, and we know from our individual interview and job offer process that that has been an issue. Working with Ms. Harnoyz and now Ms. Ashley, our new treasurer, we looked at the numbers, what we had previously budgeted, what some of the savings we've garnered through attrition and other efficiencies, and realized with minimal increase on the town side, we should be able to afford this increase in the split where the town picks up 70% of the, excuse me, 70% of the premium. The interesting thing is, as I mentioned during the budget, speaking with Dr. Vilar and the amount of state aid that he received and the same experience he's having on his side, he had indicated a willingness to assist the town, and he provided approximately $180,000 towards the increase that we would be seeing had we gone to the split. So this has been a group effort amongst the staff, and it recognizes the contributions of our existing employees, and it helps us to retain those employees and help us recruit quality employees going forward, and makes us much more competitive with the towns around us. So again, I would respectfully request a favorable vote from this body.
Thank you. Counselor Lazo.
I agree with the town manager. 15, I think it was 10 or 15 years ago, I sat on a school committee, and the school committee unanimously requested the council to go 70-30 because we had communities right next door to us that were basically outdoing us on the benefits. And the benefit was health insurance. During the years after, you would give a 2.5% raise and health insurance would go up 3%. So I think this benefit is the biggest benefit that you put into a contract. I'm supporting this here tonight. It was something that was a vision of a school district years ago, and it's nice to see it come full turn, that we would have this on the agenda, and I would be sitting here today to say yes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Jovan.
Thank you. Through you, I just want to echo what Counsel Lazo said because I know in my almost 20 years of history with the town working contract negotiations when we're on the school committee, this was one of the biggest issues that had been brought forward in our conversations with the other department heads throughout the years about this split. I'm confident now that 70-30 is the right place for us to be in the town of Southbridge. If you look at, you know, our conversations with the Bay Path School District last week, they indicated that their staff was at an 85-15 split. However, going back nine years, I think it was, or some, don't quote me on that, years, but they had switched to the 70-30 for the cost mitigation factor. So I think the surrounding towns are at that 70-30. This, I always believed that our pay scales were pretty competitive with everyone else. We just couldn't compete with the health insurance. Now, this will put us on better foot, and so perhaps many of our police officers and other employees aren't leaving the town because of the exorbitant cost of health insurance, and that anyone right now that goes out looking for a job, the biggest driver is, what do I get for health insurance? So this is the first step for us to work on the split, and then throughout the years, perhaps maybe look at the different carriers that we might be able to provide alternatives to the health insurance menu, but I certainly support this. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Counselor Marquetti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. I believe that there were several years ago that the town employees were promised a change in the health insurance, so I'm glad to see that this has been brought forward. I think, Mr. Town Manager, didn't you say that the cost was not... I think, Mr. Town Manager, didn't you say that the, the cost was not significantly higher?
So I, I did review those numbers. Last year, we had budgeted for approximately four-point-one million dollars for our healthcare. Um, and this year, we would be asking for a total of, I think, four-point-three million dollars. And that almost takes into consideration the four percent increase. But again, as I added, the, the school is pitching in to help out, and we have seen savings in other areas. Um, and we, we are factoring in a, a buffer, you know, because there may be people swapping over now that we have a better plan, but we'll have a better idea after we have open enrollment. And the main reason we're here this evening, um, ahead of the actual budget vote, is because we have to make those plans, we're required to have open enrollment, Ms. Rubena will be heading that up. So, again, if we receive a favorable vote, we'll, we'll be letting employees know that we now have seventy-thirty, and we'll have an idea of what's going to happen going forward.
Okay, thank you. The only thing that I ask is, uh, let's not forget the seniors. Thank you.
Anyone else? Counsel Lozo?
Just a quick question to the manager. TM, they used to say, when it was fifty-fifty, it was fifty-fifty throughout your career. After you retired, they continued the fifty-fifty. In this day and age, when you have seventy-thirty, after they retire, do they go to fifty-fifty, seventy-thirty, or do they get their own benefits? How does that work now?
So, we have our own retirement system, Southbridge Retirement, and it's my understanding that the retirees get fifty-fifty right now. So while you're an active employee, we offer this, currently sixty-forty, we're moving to a seventy-thirty. Once you retire, there's a separate plan that's offered to the retirees, and I think that was listed on that rate sheet on the previous, um, I'm looking, um... No, that was for the active employees. I will have to get you the numbers, but it, I, I will quickly turn around, but I believe that we offer, the town picks up fifty percent of the premium for our retirees at the moment. It's not uncommon, I've seen other towns that have different rates. And Mr. Shinier is on the Insurance Advisory Committee, and I see out of the corner of my eye, he has approached the podium, and I'm sure, uh, from my recent conversation with Mr. Shinier, would be happy to enlighten you as to what the retirees are currently being offered.
Did you check the address or how? Uh, the Insurance Advisory Committee met a few times in the, in the last couple of months, and in the discussions, we talked about the seventy-thirty split. That is for active employees, and it's the Blue Cross and Blue Shield Program. Now, for retired members, it's a fifty-fifty percent split, and once you become Medicare eligible, the town offers a Medicare, uh, Medex Three program. And as a, like in my wife and my situation, we both are on single plans for the, because we're Medicare eligible. The state of Massachusetts requires that the person to come on a Medicare supplement program when you become Medicare eligible. And the reason people from Southbridge goes on this, employees and retirees, is that under the law, if you're Medicare eligible and your community offers a supplement insurance that is better or equal to what is offered to the regular full-time employees, that they have to go to Medicare, and they get Part A, Part B, and then they get the supplement, which is Medex, uh, Three. Uh, so that's fifty-fifty, uh, split. Uh, and then during the Insurance Review Committee, just to speak on Mr. Jovan, Counsel Jovan, was, we discussed optional insurance through the state GIS program and those kind of things, and it wasn't advisable to do that this year, because GIS is in a transition period where some of the insurance companies are getting, are grouping together, and some are going away, and the five-year bid that they use or the, the programming, uh, is up for this year. So the Insurance Advisory Committee felt that it wasn't a practical, uh, reason to look to them, because the cost was more money for less benefit. And so as this evolves, uh, the Insurance Advisory Committee said they'll look at it. And then the other thing that happens with the retired members is that the insurance changes in January, where the employees, full-time employees, change su, very soon. So, uh, the Insurance Advisory Committee will get together again to see if they can get an added benefit for very low costs for the retirees, such as hearing aids, dentures, and, uh, eyeglasses. And, uh, the, the Insurance Advisory Committee felt it was very important on the seventy-thirty split, and as you counselors spoke, uh, it, it's a, it, it costs the town some money, but I think in cost savings to the community is going to be training, because as you keep losing people, you're going to keep training these people, and then when they get up to power, they leave for a better job to go somewhere else for insurance. So you're constantly retraining, retraining, and that retraining costs money. So the Insurance Advisory Committee recommended to the town manager that, uh, the seven-thirty split, uh, be hopefully approved, and it's for active employees.
Very good. Counsel Steves?
Um, yeah, I have a quick question. I don't know if I should send this to either George or the manager, but I should, probably should have asked this previous question, the previous item, but, uh, it just occurred to me. Um, so with the seventy-thirty split, the way you described it, you said it was a, a Blue Cross program. Um, does that actually apply to any of the other insurance carriers? Or is it something that we, that, once we vote, it doesn't matter which insurance carrier we have? Or is it specific to Blue Cross?
I, I believe it's for the, at the benefit of the insurance. Uh, some people have Fallon Clinic in the program right now, and Fallon Clinic's going away, and, and that's not at our, our fault, but I believe Meyer is going to be offering a, a substitute program that is going to, I think, lower the premium and, or the deductible will be higher to get a lower premium. So they were looking to add a, another insurance, Blue Cross, a, a Blue Cross program, but , uh, an offering, uh, if the employee is a healthy employee and they want to take a chance with deductibles, but that was, that was coming, I think, in the, in the future. But that'll be, again, for active employees, but that seventy-thirty split, if you change next year to say a different insurance company, that seventy-thirty will follow that, that, uh, it, it follows the insurance.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you.
What's that? Very good. All those in favor?
Roll call, Ms. Chairman.
Certainly. Roll call, Mary.
Counsel Adams?
Yes.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
And Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Unanimous of all present. Very good. Agenda item number thirteen. Vote to approve change order number one, wastewater treatment facility conveyor upgrades project with the contractor Sherbon Consolidated Incorporated for a time extension to the contract for eighty-four days as a result of manufacturer's delays of the conveyor equipment. There is no cost increase for this change order.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Counsel Marketti.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The committee voted three to nothing to send it up to the council for a vote. Before we get going here, I think the town manager had his hand up, he wanted to say something.
It, it could have waited after this, but I, I realized I had forgotten an announcement, and Ms. Dean's, uh, when she was at the podium, reminded me. I just want to let people know that, um, we have reissued the RFP for the diner, for the lease of the Red Baron Diner up at the airport. We had it out over the winter, and we did not receive any responses, so we have reissued it. We sent it out, uh, a little over a week ago. It's publicized on our webpage, it's publicized through Comm. Byes. We're going to be running an ad, uh, in conjunction with the Southbridge Airport Commission. They're helping us to, to, uh, offset the costs in the Worcester Telegram, and I just wanted to remind people, if they're interested, it's up on the new website under bids and notifications. They can find it. If anybody has any questions, they can call my office. Uh, we did have some initial interest in it, so we're hoping that we'll get someone, and I just wanted to give it another plug here this evening, and thank you, Counsel Marketti, for seeing. It, it's hard to catch people's attention when you're looking, but I didn't want to interrupt you, Mr. Chairman, so thank you for the opportunity to just add that announcement.
Sorry about that, it's the bright lights.
No, that's all right. Thank you.
Okay, Counsel Marketti.
Now, like I said, this was voted, just three to nothing, to send it up to the council for, uh, final approval. I don't believe there's any cost associated with this. If, uh, the manager wants to speak to it, or Heather, that's fine. It's just I don't, uh, I'll, I'll let you speak.
Mr. Chairman, I would defer to Ms. Blake Lee, our DPW Director.
Good evening. So yes, this is a time-only change order associated, um, with this project. We have seen delays from manufacturing, as we're seeing all over the industry, um, and we, we kind of was warned, we were warned about this early in the project, and, um, the discussion was, well, when we have a better hard-set number, but before we reach the end of the contract, we'll, we'll set it then. Um, we were just notified last week with pictures that our equipment was on skids being shipped, so the contractor felt very comfortable that now he could adjust his schedule, and this is the time that he adjusted it out to. So he's happy with the schedule that has been set forth, and as long as some way that it doesn't arrive from shipping, which I think should be here this week, we should be outside.
Very good. Anyone else? Very good. All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? Item number fourteen. Amendments to Stoppage Bylaw by adding section three-dash-one-one-zero adjudicatory hearing absence by voting member and vote to adopt said bylaw. So moved.
Second.
I'll read the bylaw in its entirety. Three-dash-one-one-zero adjudicatory hearing absence by voting members. Three-dash-one-one-zero-point-one establishment, adoption of Mass. General Law, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Twenty-three-D, the Mullen Rule. Town Council voted to adopt Mass. General Law, Section Thirty-nine, Chapter Thirty-nine, Section Twenty-three-D, the Mullen Rule at its regular town council meeting September twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one. Three-dash-one-one-zero-point-two applicability of the Mullen Rule. No member of any multiple-member board, committee, or commission of the town shall be disqualified from voting on any matter due to said member's absence from no more than a single session of any public hearing at which testimony or other evidence is received, provided, however, that no individual shall invoke this exception more than three times per calendar year. Three-dash-one-one-zero-point-three procedure. Upon missing a session of a public hearing, the voting member shall review all material and evidence presented and discussed during the missed session of the public hearing, including, but not limited to, an audio or video recording of the session. Upon review of the evidence, the member shall complete an affidavit of compliance on a form provided by the town manager's office, certifying under the pains and penalties of perjury the member's compliance with this bylaw. Three-dash-one-one-zero-point-four records. The original affidavit shall be placed in the file for the subject of the public hearing and shall be kept as part of the official record of the proceeding. Copy shall be filed in the offices of the town manager and town clerk. The affidavit and any other supporting documents and recordings shall be maintained as required by the Secretary of State's Massachusetts Records Retention Schedule. Three-dash-one-one-zero-point-five quorum. Nothing in this bylaw shall change, replace, negate, or otherwise supersede applicable quorum requirements, and under no circumstances will the absent member be counted toward a quorum. Very good. We have a motion and a second to, to adopt this bylaw. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. This was recommended unanimously for passage by the General Government Subcommittee. This is pretty basic. This is the, uh, set of conditions we wanted to provide extra on top of the law, um, as a community, which we are allowed to do. Uh, this went through legal review, um, and every member's input was actually considered and put into this. I want to thank the manager for his work on this, in particular. He worked really diligently to get the, um, after the passage of the Mullins Rule, to get this through and seen by lawyers and, um, and developed a wonderful form that will be great to use and add to the record. So I want to thank the manager and his office for their work on this.
Very good. Mr. Manager?
I just want to also note that pursuant to Counsel Marketti's request and reminder, we did pursuant to, uh, section one-one-oh-seven of the general bylaws, we ensured that this was published in a newspaper at least ten days before, on April fourteenth, it was in the Southbridge News. It was also posted on the town's website, and it was also posted on the bulletin board outside the town clerk's office, and, and my understanding, the town clerk may have had a copy as well. So it should have satisfied the publication requirements for general bylaws.
Very good. Anyone else? Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I did favor the Mullen Rule when, um, we first talked about it, and, uh, I have no, I have no problem voting for this tonight. The only thing that I would say is that really what this is, in my opinion, this is really for the planning board, because the planning board is the committee that has the problems. They have seven members, they need a five yes vote on every issue. If there's only five there, then that's, they have to have a five unanimous vote. They can't postpone it to the next meeting, because they still can only have five votes. Um, even if six people show up, they still only, only five can vote on it. So that's why I think the Mullen Rule is good for the planning board and probably the zoning board. I don't know if it's necessary for the town council, I don't see why we would need it. Uh, I think it could have been written so that it only applied to certain boards. I have no problem supporting this tonight, though. I am still looking for the Wetlands bylaw to come back up here. Uh, until then, I'll vote for this. Thank you.
Anyone else? Very good. Roll call, Mary.
Counsel Daniel?
Yes.
Counsel Jovan?
Yes.
Counsel Lozo?
Yes.
Counsel Marketti?
Yes.
Counsel Ryan?
Yes.
Counsel Steves?
Yes.
Unanimous of all present. Item number fifteen. Review, discuss curbside trash and recycle, recycling collection. Uh, Counselor Adams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, uh, go over this really quick. On March thirty-first, town council voted, uh, for April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two to come back to the town council on any proposal that we may have for the residents of, of Southbridge. On April eleventh, we received a letter from KPLaw, the council, basically stating that they had not recommended, uh, moving forward with this, this fiscal year because of the way the overrides are written, specific and general. If we look at it, um, though, probably it wouldn't happen until fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, which would be next year, uh, because within fiscal year twenty-twenty-four is when Casella's contract is up. And, uh, some of the things that we discussed also was to go out for an RFP, take a look at the cost would be, um, and go and kind of do the, uh, make sure we have the timeline properly set up and have further discussion, probably after the new council takes over. That's all I have at this point. But I know, uh, Mr. Pelletier's here, and, uh, Mr. Town Manager as well. Mr. Chair, thank you.
Very good. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Uh, you know, when I picked up my packet this last Thursday, I saw that this was not on the agenda, and I did talk to the council chair, and I was informed that the attorney could not be here tonight, but that you had a conference call with her scheduled on Friday. So I talked to the chair and the vice chair on Friday, and the explanation was that the proposition two-and-a-half override could not be on this year's ballot, because the curbside garbage collection contract would not start until twenty twenty-four, and that was the attorney's opinion. But I believe Counsel Jovan's motion on March thirty-first was that the, we would have a discussion on the type of curbside collection system we would recommend and a better estimate of the cost. And I was, first of all, I was wondering if we had any answers to that tonight. Uh, but before we get there, I really have no problem putting, not putting this on the ballot. In fact, it's always been, it's never been my opinion that this should go on, uh, on the ballot as a two-and-a-half override. I know several counselors feel that it needs to be an override, because curbside garbage collection would be a long-term contract. But as the attorney opined, even if we had a two-and-a-half override, the money could be used for something else after the first year, and that's not good planning. I would also say this, when we had waste management come to our committee, I'm, I'm positive that they said that they don't do long-term contracts anymore because of ever increasing costs. I mean, so I don't think you're going to get a ten-year contract out of something like this. So maybe three years. So it really makes no sense to do an override if you're going to have to re, renegotiate after three years. I believe that's what they said. But in my opinion, there are other ways to fund this, and we should take a look at it, because there are plenty of funds available, just for the startup here. I, just writing down some of the funds that we have available, we have two-point-eight million in free cash. Now, I'm not saying we use the entire amount, but we could use a portion of it. Four-point-eight... 4.8 million in stabilization. 3.5 million in ARPA funds. We voted to use 400,000 of ARPA money for a rail trail. Why can't we use a portion of it for curbside? 1 million in landfill royalty account. In my opinion, that's probably the most appropriate source of funding for curbside collection. There's marijuana money, solar money. There's a million dollars in the sale of the Wells Building. There's 14.3 million in the capital project fund balance. We received a list of the capital fund balance going back to 2013. And I think it's time that we take a look at these funds and determine if any of these funds, any unused funds are available. I'm not saying we use it all, but we could probably find some of it for the startup of this curbside collection. As for using free cash, according to the DLS, Division of Local Services, that was sent to me by Counsel Jovan, as a nonrecurring revenue source, free cash should be restricted to paying one-time expenditures, funding capital projects, or replenishing other reserves. So if we did use something like stabilization funds or other reserves for curbside, then we could use free cash to replenish those reserves. So it's my opinion, the taxpayers have paid enough, so much that we have excess funds available this year. What about future years? Well, that's something that we need to plan for. And I've advocated in the past that we try and set aside a certain portion of our budget. Even 1% this year would probably give us about a third of the cost for curbside. So at this point, I think it would be a good idea if the council asked the town manager to at least look at other ways of funding curbside garbage collection in Southbridge. I see no harm in at least exploring our options. A lot of counselors, they like to say, let's think outside the box. Well, let's think outside the box. I don't see, I, I think that Tom, it would be a good idea if the town manager just, just took a look at different options, came back to us and said, and let us know what he has found. If you want me to put that into a formal motion, I would. I don't know if it's necessary. We could just, I don't think it's necessary to put it into a motion, but I will if you want. Thank you.
Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. Just my only response was that, yeah, I did request that we perhaps get the RFP just so we had a better sense if we were going to go on to an agenda item and put a proposition two and a half override out to the voters, that we had some basis of what those numbers are. Certainly respect the opinion of our council and would agree that, and I think I did bring that up, that if we were to vote an override, that a council could do whatever they want. But specifically, I think that if the voters have voted on an override for a specific purpose, and the purpose would be to fund curbside collection, I would think, and I would hope that any future council would bring that curbside collection in and would have to fund it that way, because the funding mechanism isn't going to go away. There are certainly pockets of money that are available, however, those are one-time costs. And I think that, I certainly agree with the previous speaker that we should think outside the box, or the counselors should think outside the box as to how you fund such an endeavor as curbside collection. But to target one-time, one-time funds such as stabilization or royalty account or landfill account, those are one-time funds that once you use it, there's no sustainability to keep that replenished. Had there been a revenue source that the landfill continued, and we were funding that, then yes, royalty accounts in, you would fund it and you would go away. It would be perpetual. I think, and we've seen this in other communities, and we've seen this in our community as well, that if you use one-time funds for recurring costs and build that into your budget as one-time costs, when you have that year, you don't have that free cash, or you use your stabilization because it's all relative. If we use stabilization money and withdraw, say, a million, a million-five from stabilization for the first year, that would impact our bond ratings. So I think that's why you do need to have a plan to go forward and think about how we would fund this at what the minimal impact to the taxpayer will be. So those are all valuable, and I do agree with the previous speaker as to the town manager, I would ask the town manager, yeah, take a look at that of how we could build this. But to use these one-time funds to fund this, even in the first year, I think is just a recipe for disaster. We worked very hard over the last several years to bring financial stability to the town of Southbridge and build up reserves. So the fact that we're in a good cash position, that if something were to happen, that we're not placed in a, in a tenuous situation. So it's a difficult pill to swallow. I just take that year now and, and work on the plan of how much it's going to cost and how we minimize the impact to the taxpayer. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lozo, then Counsel Steve.
All right, just a quick, quick note. I was more hung up on the process than the actual outcome. When a counselor directs or makes a motion voted unanimously by the, by the committee, it must go on to the agenda. And with that in mind, I, when I got my agenda, I didn't see it on there. And since then, there has been a revised agenda. But, you know, even if it's a discussion that it cannot go on the ballot or discussion, I think, I think the intent of what Counsel Jovan was doing was spurring more discussion on the issue and putting a timeline on it, which a lot of times, we discuss something and it kind of goes on and on, where I, I agreed with him, you know, let's, let's bring it to a discussion, let's find some answers. I too thought there would be more information, even if it doesn't go on the ballot. So for me, I think if we need more time, if there's going to be discussion further, it's the way to go. But anytime any council makes a motion is a second, and a direct date to come back, it must come back, even if it's not favorable, or we find out other information, we'll just bring the information out at that agenda item. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To dovetail with what Counsel Jovan said a few minutes ago, I was curious if we could take a look at this in terms of, would it be possible to use one-time funds, some of the items that Counsel Marquette was mentioning, and may, just to simply start up the project with, for, to fund the trucks and the other infrastructure we would need, but use, but see what it would cost if, what the requirements we use a pay-as-you-throw system thereafter to fund it, to keep it running on a regular basis? I don't know what that would cost in terms of, of sticker fees or bag fees or whatnot. Would that be possible to do that? Those are the kinds of, those are the kinds of data that we need to know, to how, to determine how we structure this project. Just what I have at the moment.
Very good. Anyone else? Counsel Marquette.
Oh, thank you. Just as a follow-up, we do have Mr. Pelletier here, and I wouldn't mind hearing from him about the, the cost associated with this and what type of curbside garbage collection that we're talking about. I wouldn't mind hearing from him on this. I think, I believe he said to me last, at the last meeting, that he had it down pretty close to what he thought it was going to cost and what type of service would be provided, if that's possible.
Certainly.
Thank you.
Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to add that I have no problem working with Counsel Adams, Mr. Pelletier, to look at alternative sources of information for you folks. The memo that you received was born out of the question that Counsel Jovan raised last time, looking at, you know, essentially a conditional RFP. I started looking into that and had these conversations, and then we got into, I referenced a few things by town council, and we got into the discussion about the override in the fiscal year and the requirements. So that is how that information came back to you folks. Again, there, there are alternative ways, but there, I'm sure Mr. Pelletier, he and I have discussed it, will come up and tell you, there, there are advantages and disadvantages to everything. And there are communities, I'm sure he can tell you, I did some research on my own, pay-as-you-throw or enterprise fund, the challenge in some communities is making sure that everybody continues to subscribe. If people leave the program and you're obligated to a contract with a hauler, the town could be picking up the difference if people pull out of the program. And again, I don't want to steal any of Mr. Pelletier's thunder, but we have free trash collection right now, curbside collection. And we already have problems with illegal dumping, and that's a concern in some communities when you don't have a system provided by the town, that if people are forced to go out on their own, that you may see a spike in that. So we can continue to work and look at information, and as the fiscal year goes on, put out RFPs and see what other type of data we can gather. But as I said, there may be advantages and disadvantages to every option that we look at. And with that, I'll hand it over to Mr. Pelletier.
Good evening. You're asking some broad questions. We brought to this council and to the town manager an estimate of 1.6 to 1.8 million dollars to run the, to run the trash program in 2024. That goes under an assumption that we're going to keep the same number of people involved in the trash program. We currently have 6,300 people involved in the trash program. It also goes under the assumption that trash per Swanna, which is a accepted trash fraternity, will rise at about 4% a year going forward. The 1.6 to 1.8 million we gave you is less than 15% margin of error. I think it's an accurate number. If you're asking me to get tighter than that, I don't believe that's possible because I can't predict three years, two years into the future. The, I've been on projects replacing a school in Auburn where we asked for an override, and we based it on projections, and the projections were within 20%. Ultimately, we can't do it without the actual bid from the contractor who's going to bid it. We can't do it without the actual bid from the procurement or the taking of the properties. So there's unknowns. So the closest, I stand by the numbers I gave. I'm fairly confident that these numbers will be accurate. We based it off of towns that have similar trash numbers. The town of Holden was on the low end. They have 6,200 participants in their trash program. They pay, and it's a new contract, a recent contract, but they pay 1.24. The reason theirs is low at 1.2 right now is because they do bi-weekly trash pickup. So your trash tonnage is the same, but the number of collection routes is reduced by one-third. They end up with, we, we run one trash, every two weeks, one trash program, a second trash program, and one recycling program. They run two sets of trucks, one trash program, one recycling program. So the cost of collection is down a third minus the mobilization costs. The closest one to us has a 64-gallon weekly recycling, a 95-gallon bi-weekly trash. They have 7,000 people on the program at the town of Canton. They are over $2 million right now. They have 1,000 more people than us, more participants. So they are over $2 million. Fairhaven has 6,500 participants at 1.674 million. So I'm basing it off those numbers, off of interviews with trash collecting companies who are not going to commit to a dollar amount until you give a RFP or until you negotiate exclusively with them. So it's going to be very difficult to get any closer than the 12% to 13% margin of error that we have right now. You asked what kind of services we considered in this. Anna and I talked extensively on this. We talked to Counsel Adams, and we also included Town Manager. We would propose, including the 64 gallons a week trash pickup, the 95 gallon, or actually unlimited recycling in appropriate containers, bi-weekly. Lawn debris in the spring and in the fall. We would propose doing away with the bulk and let, although the contractor would be obligated to work with the, the occupants or the owners, but they could charge a fee for bulk. There wouldn't be a constant drop-off from March through December, or through the middle of December, as we do now. And we wouldn't negotiate, negotiate in the hazardous waste days that we get four times a year. Anna and I talked extensively on it, and we think we could find ways to fund or supplement a single event each year. So those are the type of services we considered, and obviously, we would put it back on the council to consider what they would want to have put back in on that. But everything gets put back in would add to the cost of the service. So I honestly, we, we talked extensively. I don't believe I can get closer than a 12% margin of error.
Thank you.
All set? Very good. Thank you. Counsel Jovan.
Yeah, just real quick. I don't think there's much to discuss this evening. The bottom line was, bring it back. Are we going to go for an override vote or not? Is the language going to go on? Are we going to have some numbers? I appreciate the work that they did, that we got to this point so that we're prepared and that stays on the dialogue to make sure that we're not in a position. All along this has been, from the date that we negotiated as chairman of the council, when we negotiated the settlement agreement with Casella, we knew this date was coming, and we worked with Counsel Adams and, and this entire council to say, how do we get to a point, instead of previous ways where everything catches us last minute, we were trying to be proactive? And we just have to continue to be proactive and look at what those alternatives are, how it's going to be funded, what the numbers are, and whether this town would even have the appetite for an override. And that's going to be the bottom line. How do you finance and how do you, how do you do an override? And you have to really get out to the public. I've said this, we have to get to the public about, do you even have an appetite for an override to pick up trash? And what are those numbers? And educate and have dialogue. If it's not curbside, what is the alternative? The alternative is do your own. So I, I hire a vendor if I want. I have a small family. I could go every two weeks and hire somebody, that it's cheaper for me to do that than it is for me to pay the tax. Or on some ways, the tax could be cheaper than what it would cost for me to hire alternative haulers. So there's nothing really more to talk about this evening, but the continued dialogue has to stay there to make sure that it doesn't get forgotten, which I am sure with this council, when I'm gone, will not forget it. Thank you.
Very good. There being no further discussion, let's move on, please. Gen item number 16, discuss COVID-19 update and take any action thereof. Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Because we have Ms. Pelletier here this evening, perhaps we can turn this right over to him. As you know, he provided us late last week with some numbers, and there has been an uptick in the number of cases, and so he might be best positioned to address any questions of the council.
Okay. Can you give us a slight update?
All right, brief update. I have informed both my board and this council of a continuous increase in the positivity rate and also in the cases per 100,000 since February 27th. We are just shy of, if you recall, the previous system that the state was using, the gray, green, yellow, red system, we are just shy of going back into the red right now. I received 15 cases, actually counting the ones I just closed out before I came up here, 19 cases from Friday till now. So that is pushing seven cases a day. I am investigating right now two, one significant cluster in one of our facilities here in town, incorporating 17 cases of COVID, and another smaller one that we have curbed by closing that facility. But there were two clusters, cluster events happening. As of today, I have 24 people in restricted circulation. I'm not sure if the council's aware, but the new guidance is if you are vaccinated, actually, I don't even think it's vaccinated, but five days total isolation, and then thereafter, if you have no symptoms, the next five days in a mask. I've got 24 people in circulation in a mask right now, and I've got 30 people in strict isolation right now. So we have a total of 54 people that are in some level of isolation.
Counselor Adams.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Just, Ms. Pelletier, if you already answered this, I apologize, but the hospital, how's the hospital looking right now? I understand they receive patients from all over. I think it's 22 communities. from all over. I think it's 22 communities, but how are they looking right now?
Hospital is, last I heard from the hospital representative, the hospital is close to 9% on the positivity rate.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Mr. Pelletier? Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Are you proposing any action to take on this and take any action thereof? So are you proposing that we take some further action, or are you just letting us, just informing us of the?
This is informative. I was actually here for the solid waste, but I hung around because I knew this was on, and I didn't want to put the town manager in a corner. I am not, at this time, recommending. I'm trying to follow what the state is doing. State seems to be status quo. Before I come to this board and recommend any action, I would go to the Board of Health and see where they wanted to go with it, giving them as much information so they can make an intelligent decision on it.
All right. Thank you.
Counsel Adams, then Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, to answer Counsel Marketti's question itself. We put that on there because I was recently reached out by the Chair of the Planning Board about re-changing up our motion that we had before where it was remote, in-person-only, hybrid banned. He specifically asked me if, because of the situation they're in right now, where they're set up downstairs, is conundrum to what they're doing on a daily basis. I believe the Planning Board has one individual that's coming back from an illness, and then you had another one who is going to be out of state for quite some time. So they, Dave asked me to reach back out to the Town Council and see if they're willing to change that motion to allow hybrid back in, because it's something that they use extensively during their period of time. And I said I would bring it back to the Town Council. I do have a motion in place, and I can, I could wait till Counsel Steves goes through. I can make that motion at that point in time.
Very good. Counsel Steves.
I had a quick question. As far as this caseload, are you seeing, what are you seeing in terms of people who have already been vaccinated and the various variants? Are they actually being tested for?
The town of Southbridge currently has 67% of the people vaccinated. So a huge percent of the people who are getting the disease are vaccinated. I am getting, thank God for this, I'm getting a lot less deaths than I was earlier on. So the vaccination seems to be effective as far as symptoms, the intensity of symptoms. But I'm getting a significant amount, well over 50% of the people who get, who have cases are vaccinated people. That's what I figured. Okay, okay. Thanks.
Very good. Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Make a motion to vote to allow chairs of all boards, committees, including the Town Council and School Board, decide to hold their meetings either remote, in-person, or hybrid, and readdress Governor Baker's extension order on or before July 15, 2022.
Second.
Very good. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Counsel Jovan.
Thank you. Through you. Originally, when I spoke about the hybrid meetings, it was really for the council meetings that are held in this chamber for hybrid purposes. They're extremely difficult. The technology isn't what it should be to have council meetings here or a hybrid approach. That was the main impetus for my belief that if we were going to do it, it was either all in-person or all remote because of the technology in this dais, because you can't hear people. Also, if the, I would ask that if you're going to do, if these boards are going to do a hybrid, it's not just simply you throw a computer up and you're not able to see or hear the other members, because the law states very clearly that you must be able to hear those participants on both sides for it to be an open meeting. I'm a firm believer that there's going to be some technology in some of these small meeting rooms where a TV on a stand with a computer monitor could be willed, and we do it all the time for examinations under oath throughout the country. Lawyers set it up all the time that they can have depositions with a set of panel of one lawyer in one room and people elsewhere. I'm sure it could be done. So if those small boards can accommodate it, that it's technically feasible, and it meets the requirements of the law, that those boards do it. However, they should also be, because I see some of these meeting notices, namely not to pick on the Board of Health, that don't list at the beginning what you're supposed to read at the beginning, that this is a meeting, where they could go directly. That's supposed to be read at the beginning of every meeting. The guidance was set out when I was chairman of the council. It should be followed with updated language to make sure that all boards are meeting the requirements of the open meeting law. We have individuals that like to throw around that we violate the open meeting law when we don't. So on some of those, those things, as long as they do it correctly, I don't have an issue with it. But I will not support the Town Council having a full meeting hybrid. That much I will not support. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel Marketti.
Thank you. I don't have any problem allowing them the decision that they want to make, how they want to run their meetings. I don't have a problem with it. I have to agree, it's very difficult to hear anybody up on that screen there. So I don't have a problem with it. I have to agree with Counsel Jovan that as long as they are able to do it and everybody can hear them, then that's fine. I do know that Counsel Jovan has his fire station building committee meeting remote, so I don't see anything wrong with anybody else having it that way. It seems to me, though, if they're going to, why even have a hybrid? Why don't you just have it either remote or in-person? Why they would need a hybrid? I don't know, but I have no problem with it. Thank you.
Counsel Steves, then Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just for everyone's information, according to the, well, the February 18th update from the state, the law allows, extends the existing deadlines until July 15th. And that it says it must, any of, any meetings that occur in, they must allow adequate alternative means of public access, which they define as may include, without limitation, providing public access through phone, internet, satellite-enabled audio or video conferencing, or any other technology that enables the public to clearly follow the proceedings of the public body in real time. We can't just post, we can't just exclude the public from a meeting and then post it after the fact, which I don't think we would do anyway. But, but those kinds of things. And so I'm inclined to agree with what Counsel Marketti was saying about the issue with, and what Counsel Jovan was saying about the hybrids. We've seen this repeatedly for the last year and a half now, how hybrids don't work all that well. They're, they're kind of useful, but they're also kind of a pain. And if, but the way the law is currently set up, any public body can meet in complete remote if they so desire, or they can require, if I understand it properly, they can also have, they meet in public, but the, but the public doesn't come in. If I'm reading it properly, that seems to be okay. I may be wrong. But I would think it would make, it would be fairer for everybody that whichever board does it, they did it. It would be fairer to do it entirely all room, all remote for most of these boards. Although it does make it harder for the public to sometimes know what's going on, because I've seen a few situations where, where meetings were not properly posted in the sense that they were remote meetings, but they didn't have accurate numbers for access to them. That was when it happened a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, we need to be super careful about how we make sure that these people know what's happening, so they, if they want to attend, they can actually get there.
Counsel Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I agree with Counsel Jovan, all the councils up here. Again, the chairs have to make the concerted effort and responsibility. This place up here doesn't work, obviously, for the Town Council. But, but I do know the Planning Board down there, they called me probably the day after we made the vote originally, and they made it very clear that it's been working for them for quite some time, and they're kind of disappointed that it was changed. But that being said, unless there's a memo on the table, I'd leave it alone and move the question.
Very good.
Could you just repeat the motion, please?
Sure.
I'll be going back to the video.
I'll provide that for you. Vote to allow chairs of all boards, committees, including the Town Council and School Board to decide to hold their meetings either remote, in-person, or hybrid, and readdress Governor Baker's extension order on or before July 15, 2022.
Any further discussion? There are all those in favor? Opposed? We have a 6-1 vote. Counsel Lazo on the negative. Very good. Item number 17, council's forum. Counsel Marketti.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd just like to take this opportunity to wish Ms. Blakely the very best in her future endeavors. Also, I would just like to make one more comment about curbside garbage collection. You know, I remember hearing stories back when there were floods in Southbridge, and residents took in families who were displaced by the flooding. People helping other people in Southbridge, that is the Southbridge way. And can I afford to pay for my own garbage collection? Yes, I can, but some people cannot afford to pay for their own garbage collection. So we have to work together on this. We are a community. We have to help each other out. Everyone has garbage. Everyone needs a way to dispose of it. So I feel that the best way to go would be a curbside garbage collection for the whole town. And with that, I wish everybody a good evening. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Steves.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two quick items. One is just a reminder that for those of you who are participating, the municipal vulnerability program's second forum is tomorrow night from 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Community Center. So we're going to be discussing some of the stuff that we talked about the last forum two weeks ago, only in this case, taking a look at some of the possible solutions that, to the issues that we raised then. And the other item is a question through you to the manager, is if we could get an update on the Hunter's Ridge paving and betterment process. That's been in limbo for about two years or something like that now. It actually predates your arrival as manager. And I'm not sure where any of that stands at this point. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. First, I want to wish Ms. Blakely a wonderful move away. I will miss you at the head of the DPW. I appreciated the tour you gave me and all the insight and meetings you've given me. It's been very informative and helpful in during my time, and I will appreciate it and miss you. Mary, now I'm going to miss you a lot. You have been here. You have stuck through these meetings, long, long meetings with us. You're like another member of this council. I'm going to miss you, and I wish you the best of luck. You're going to be a hard one to replace.
Thank you.
Very good. Counsel Lazo.
I'm going to repeat, the Recording Secretary has done a fantastic job. You will be missed. It's always hard to get the data correct, and you've done a great job getting it correct. I will comment on Heather Blakely. It wasn't too long ago, I was not on council, I was at my place of business, and there was a horrendous storm, to the point where the water came down High Street and was ripping up the pavement in the street. And I looked out the door of my business, and I saw this lady working with a shovel in the middle of the storm, and I turned around, I go, that's impressive. That's a worker. And I was like, and I didn't know who she was. And then I had to go and ask one of the counselors, who's the lady that works with the DPW? Because I didn't know. And they said, that's Heather Blakely. I said, well, let me tell you something. She works harder than some of the guys I watch, doing some of the maintenance in town. That in hand, I think I've had a good relationship with Heather. Heather, I wish you, I thank you very much for your service, but I wish you the best in your future endeavors, and I hope that you're only a phone call away, because now you've become one of Southbridge, what we call historians. Mr. Jovan knows how we sit there, and we bring the history back for the newcomers that don't have a clue. Thank you very much.
All set? Very good. Counsel Jovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Couple things. First off, through you, I don't know if Counsel Adams can answer this or not, and I wrote down a note. A while back, we had voted to put electrical stations throughout town. Is there any update of what happened with that grant? Or, I don't remember seeing anything, and every time I see an electrical station, I say, whatever happened to that grant? Did we not get it? Or what the status of that is? If you happen to know. If not, if you could find out.
I'll follow up.
Okay. Second, again, a good friend who speaks at Citizen Forum, I'm not going to rehash all the things that I had laid out at a council meeting of what the true facts were. He challenged citizens to look at the facts and do your research. I give that same challenge to citizens to follow the facts. Again, I think from his perspective, we see things differently, and I'll respect his opinion. I do not appreciate being called a liar, or he should not be allowed to disparage us. We're big, we're big boys up here. Counsel Lazo and I can take it. But he has his right to say that, but I'll let the fact speak for itself on that matter. I'll be done with that. I'll just look forward to, when I'm off council, perhaps I'll use that time at Citizen Forum for a good debate at that time. To those running for council, I wish you the best of luck. Hopefully, your papers are all in. To Heather Blakely, I want to thank you for all your service to the town of Southbridge, all the work. You were a pleasure for me to work with over the four years that I've been on Town Council, three as chairman. It was a pleasure to work with you. You're sorely going to be missed. A lot of projects that were undertaken within the town, a lot of challenges. But as was evidenced earlier, the announcement was, we have one of the top-rated water departments in the state, high-quality products, town services. So whatever town you are going to or city, they are fortunate to get, to get you, and I wish you the best of luck. There, you'll be sorely missed. To, I consider her my right-hand person when I was chairman of the council, to Mary. First, congratulations on your nuptials over the weekend. Lucky young man to marry you. So congratulations on that. And thank you for all your service to the town of Southbridge. It is a difficult position to be in. You have to listen to a lot. I'm sure you learned a lot about town politics, and you've heard a lot, and perhaps one day, in this next career of yours as a playwright and producer or director or whatever you are doing, that you do a play about the town of Southbridge. Perhaps. I'm sure something will be in the works. And when you're on Broadway somewhere as that director, and you remember this humble town that you served. So thank you for all the hard work that you did. So thank you. That's all I have to say.
Very good. Vice Chair Adams.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you. First of all, Mary, wish you nothing but the best, and thank you for your service to our community, all the hard work and having to ramble on, which is ramble on for quite some time. So thank you so much for sacrificing your time for this community. Ms. Blakely, thank you for everything. It's been a pleasure having conversations with you over and over again on certain things and within the town. And I got to tell you, whoever plays, she has big shoes to fill. So thank you, and I wish you the best in your next career move. I want to wish all the administrative professionals a happy Administrative Professionals' Day, which is on this Wednesday, and all those nurses out there, thank you for your sacrifice, which is Nurses' Day is on the 13th. So I wish, I'm sorry, the 5th, 6th, on the 6th. So thank you for all they do. On May 10th, the Central Massachusetts Municipality Planning Organization is having a tip review. You can find it on the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission's website, and it's going to be going over, I believe it's 2023 to 2027, which we, I believe we have three projects, two bridges and one tip project over there on Central Street. So if you want to listen in on that, so we have three projects on that. And lastly, Memorial Day Parade will happen on 30th of May, on that Monday morning. I'll get the information out to everybody, including the flyer. So that's all I have. Mr. Chair, item number 18, discussed in the next meeting, May 9, 2022. Mr. Chair, item number 18, discussed in the next meeting, May 9th, 2022, 7:00 p.m. here in the dais.
I'd just like to say thank you to Heather as well. I think she's been a spectacular role model for the young girls in Southbridge, proving that you can know math, you can know engineering, you can know construction, you can know sewers, you can know fresh water, you can know a miserable conveyor belt that's been a pain in the neck for four years that I've been on. I think your, your work boots are going to be big work boots to, to fill in your replacement. And I know you've been a great help to me. Your tours are spectacular. You leave nothing that's uncovered. So I know that I've enjoyed the tours, and they helped me, I think, to, for me to do a better job as a counselor. So for that, I'm very appreciative. So thank you. Mary, congratulations on your marriage. I'm sure he's a very lucky guy. And that's it. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Opposed? Unanimous of all present? We are adjourned.